Sandra Lobo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Sandra Lobo and I'm with the Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition. I live on 3150 Rochambeau in Norwood that currently has some of the highest rates of evictions in New York City. I live in an apartment that currently has preferential rent that can disappear at any time at the discretion of my landlord. And I am luckier than most. I can currently pay my rent. But as a mother of two children, in the midst of the scrupulous practices of many of our landlords, I question for how long? I came to the Bronx over 20 years ago as a young person and was moved and inspired by the history of strength and resilience of the Bronx people. Specifically, low-income people of color who worked together to rebuild our borough after the private and public sector had literally abandoned our borough in the 1970s. After decades of work by our people to rebuild, we build not only the actual buildings in our neighborhoods, many of which were burned by their own landlords for insurance money, but we build our communities that were torn apart by white flight and racist practices like redlining. We now find ourselves being pushed out by landlord harassment, serious disappears, and living conditions that are one of the greatest contributors of why the Bronx is the unhealthiest county in New York State. You've heard very, very personal stories this evening by many of our community members who have shared the devastating living conditions with which they live and the landlords who refuse to fix them, who harass them, who take them to court on fraudulent cases, who charge them illegal fees, who often threaten them both verbally and physically, all in the attempts to push us out in hopes of making higher profits. Gentrification preferences in the Bronx are the highest they have ever been. We see rates of evictions that foreshadow the homelessness and major displacement that is to come if rents continue to rise. We know that rising rents are not the only reason why our people are spending over 50% of our incomes on rent. There is much work to do. But these rent increases are the difference for our people between having a home and being homeless. The Bronx is no longer affordable to most of our community members, but it is the most affordable borough in New York City. Our folks have nowhere else to go. I believe that New York City would not be New York City without our people. Our Bronx would not be our Bronx without our people. So this evening, I'm appealing to your conscience to allow our people to stay in our homes and live with dignity. Your rent rollback vote is a vote for our people. It's a message to all of us that you want us here and that you believe we have a place in this great city. When you make a decision, we ask that you will join us as we continue to organize and to fight for our Bronx. Whose Bronx?
Our Bronx!
Thank you.
The next speakers are Lester Roberts, Amanda Moreno, and Althea Matthews.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lester Roberts. I'm a tenant of 315 East 167th Street. I was chosen by that lovely young lady sitting there, Jordan, to speak. I'm not much of a speaker, but I guess this is new to me as well. I know a lot of people stood up here and said a few things, and I'm opening my ears to a lot of the things that I've heard. I was just voted the tenants association president for my billing, so welcome me because this is new to me. The RGB, this is new to me as well. I am still learning about you guys and continuing with the help of Jordan and Pablo, I'm learning more and more every day. I don't want to stand here and speak all night because I know you guys want to get out of here just as well as we do. I'd like to say that you guys should consider what we've all spoke about tonight, about increasing the rent throughout the tri- Bronx, not just the Bronx, Brooklyn, Queens, Staten Island, all the boroughs. Roll it back. Roll it back. There's a lot of people suffering out there. I've been working in healthcare for 25 years and I see the increase in homeless people throughout this borough. It's been a major increase. The hospitals throughout the area have just brought more and more and more homeless people into our facility, and it's getting ridiculous. And these are people that, just like me and you, had our apartments, lived comfortable until they had landlords that pushed them out to the street with their families. They were in shelters, they couldn't be in shelters anymore, so unfortunately, they did the next best thing, which was to go on the street to be comfortable. I'm asking you, think about it. One day, you could be in that situation. No rent increase. Thank you. Get home safe. God bless, everyone.
Thank you.
Amanda Moreno.
Hello.
Hello.
So we're gonna sing a song. So I'm gonna start off with my testimony. My name is Amanda. Thank you for introducing me. Thank you for being here.
Can you speak more- pull the microphone down. There you go.
I live in the Bronx. I lived in the Bronx almost all my life. I live on 174th and University Avenue, High Bridge. The Bronx is so amazing and beautiful and vibrant, and sometimes I feel like I dress for it every day. Just the other day, some very influential hip-hop folks, Dougie Fresh, Slick Rick, Cool Herc, Remy Ma, were honored and decided to drop the name by 1520 Cedric Avenue Hip-Hop Boulevard. And that's a big deal to me, right? Because I love hip-hop and we claim our spaces every day. Every day, we take small steps to claim what is ours, what is constantly stolen, bartered, and traded, but is ours. This is our home, and we have no choice. I work as an organizer with CASA, and we're in a beautiful transition right now. And that's the theme of tonight, right? A transition. Where I play and where I used to run around, I also work in, which is amazing, to uplift my community and also be from it. I sit with mothers every day who talk about transitions too, like she wants her son to live a life of his own. And what that means in America right now is to have or own a home. Life is about transitions. Yet, you make it so hard to grow in our neighborhoods and in our homes. We're crowded, we're cramped. She wants romance, joy, and laughter, but is burdened with rent and supporting her son and his wife because they too cannot afford to move out. Tenants have to fight. They're not paid for this, right? They have to take a step to fight every day and take time out of their family's lives and lives for themselves just to receive basic services like heat and hot water. So I'm asking you, Mary, Scott, David, Helen, Kathleen, Andrew, Hillary, Harvey, and Shayla, how low are you gonna go tonight? How low are you gonna go for the final vote?
Bajen, bajen, bajen. Bajenos la renta! Uuuh, no podemos, no podemos más. We have to, have to, have to, have to decide now what we can afford now, the rent or food. El sueldo mínimo, no tuve lo suficiente para cubrir your rent increase.
Althea Matthews.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have nothing prepared. I'm gonna speak from the heart. Thank you for staying with us. I remember the first time coming to speak at the board was in June 12, 2014. I host this college where I was there to take care of some business at the school, and I saw all these orange shirts and I asked them what they was about, and they told me. And I wound up testifying that evening. I wasn't scheduled. I think I was the last to the- next to the last, and then quarter to 11:00, because I was so moved about the tenants and everybody's testimony, and it seemed like it's a repeat again that nothing has changed. And at that time, when I spoke, I was homeless. And now, I just graduated from being homeless to a room. And I work and I advocate for tenants and affordable housing all the time with CASA, and nothing's changed. And I see that there are too many landlords. Y'all have to do something. Now, I'm not saying all are bad, but the ones are bad making y'all look bad. Because these things that these people asking for are just basic needs, just basic needs. And they want their rent, and then they take them to court because they want their money, but they don't want to do anything for that money. This is part of the lease agreement for people to live in dignity, to provide heat, hot water, and all the basic necessities. So I don't understand why y'all not working with these landlords to make sure they do what they need to do for these people. Now, instead of them burning the Bronx, they running us out of the Bronx, you know, with all these MCIs and all of these- all the power that these landlords have. They just doing it in a different form, and nothing has changed. And I'm just asking for a rollback because I'm on workers' compensation, and my workers' compensation hasn't increased since 2014, when I first spoke to y'all. So I'm pretty sure those who are working salary hasn't changed. Maybe you should look into this attitude and see who has got a raise and who hasn't, what company gave or have given their employers raise. You'll see, it has not been the same. So I'm just asking for y'all to get a rollback so we can get and breathe a little, just breathe a little. I know we had that rent free, but it's still not enough. It's not enough. And right now, with the rezoning and what you love coming out, you know, we don't know what that term sheet is gonna be right now. The term sheet is not representing the 73 blocks that's gonna be rezoned on Jerome Avenue. So if they don't change that term sheet, we gonna be displaced. We gonna be moving in with the people that's already in shelter because y'all not cleaning that up either. So where are the people gonna go? Y'all rent people from Brooklyn, Staten Island don't want us, you know? So where are we gonna go? There's too many people in the shelter, and now it look like we gonna be going right next to them if y'all don't help and change this system. That's all I'm asking. A rent rollback, right now! Thank you so much. Y'all get home safe.
The next three speakers are Edgar Vasquez, Edward Garcia, and Pedro Reyes. Edgar Vasquez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm an original pioneer here from late in the 70s, when we used to take condemned buildings and build them into gardens, into beautiful gardens here in the Bronx, okay? My building right now, where I live at, is 20 West 190th Street, right next to Fordham Row, which is a beautiful college they built, which is Monroe College right now. My building is always infected with drugs, a lot of crackheads in the hallways, and the building of where I live at, I have a slumlord, a very bad one. If you look it up on the internet, it's very clear. My situation is this, and I ask my son the same question. How do you sleep at night in the conditions that we are living in? Not only for myself, but everyone that's in this room, okay? The other question is, how do you get up in the morning facing the situation that you have to do on a daily basis? I did that. I am what I call a survivor of the Bronx, okay? Now, it's not an issue to condemn or to say or to shout or to scream or to yell, but we all have a heart. I'm doing it on behalf of my son, my grandson, and my mother. It is very difficult, if you put the math together, how much income each and every one of us do we get on a daily basis? And in reality, I'm gonna be honest with you, we don't get nothing to have fun with, especially now for the summer. We really don't. I can understand the issues of the landlord that needs because the supply has to be met, work has to be done, and everything else. But here's the question to you. What about us? It's very simple. What about us? As we speak, every year, they raise the rent, and it's meeting to the same guideline that the mayor wants to have as affordable housing, exactly the same. So my question to you again is this. How do you sleep at night? Every night, I pray that I have to find a way to feed my family. Every day, I find a way to find a way to find money to take them to the hospital, to school, whatever has to be done. It is not an easy concept. Out of all five boroughs, as I did my research, all five boroughs, the poorest one is the Bronx. And by the way, don't believe me, go to the New York Museum right now, and my picture's up there as I was fixing up and cleaning out the parking lot, every burning building that happened here in the 70s, to make a difference. Now, I'm asking you as the panelists again, how do you sleep at night? We pray and find a better way to look forward for tomorrow. All I'm asking you is this. Take it as a consideration as we are here. Earlier, we- this whole room was full of people, right now. This whole room! Everybody's had that energy. It's a good example, when people get a chance to move out, this is what's left of homeless people, emptiness. What for? So that everybody can be satisfied and find a better way. How can we get money to pay our daily rent? How can we meet our guidelines of what we have to meet? Take it under consideration. I know this much. I go to sleep tonight, and I have to pray and make sure that I have to live the next day to find something for my family, my children, and to have a roof over our heads every day. What about you? It's very easy for you guys to decide, but we have to swallow this every day, and it's not easy. Please, for a good example from me to you, find it within your heart and your place to understand the situation. My building is still condemned by crackheads, dealers, and it's falling apart. The landlord really ain't doing much of anything. And by the way, I'm about to put a beautiful shoot of video of everything I have done, and you're gonna see my building. By the way, Mayor Dickens came to my building and shut it down many years ago because we had a prostitute apartment downstairs. My building has a nasty big history, okay? And again, why help the landlord if the landlord's not doing his part? And by the way, I see tenants move in and out, in and out, in and out, every day. You know why I stay behind? Hope, a chance, not for me, but my family. To move from one apartment to another, it costs us too much money. Where can we get it from? Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Garcia.
Hello. I mean, I wrote something, and I'm not gonna read it. I'm just gonna speak from my mind. My name is Edward. I'm an organizer with Northwest Bronx, but I'm also a Bronx resident. And I want to thank you all for being here, but I also thank all these beautiful people for being here, who has- who worked many hours and are still here and have to probably wake up very early tomorrow to go to their jobs. So thank you. I was myself evicted five years ago, and I used to live at 3235 Grand Concourse. My mom was paying- my mom was a single mother, paying a $2,000 rent for a three-bedroom apartment. She couldn't afford it, so she had to do all it takes to keep us there. So she had to sell clothing, she had to do anything, and I saw her break her bag going up the stairs in the train station to make ends meet. But the landlord tried many times, and he got us out. I was fortunate enough to find another apartment, but many are not able to. And my mom, to keep us in that apartment, she had to borrow so much money. Until this day, she still is paying it. So, and that happens a lot with many residents. They want to stay, they do all they can. She borrowed money from other countries because she couldn't even get it here so that she could keep us there, and at the end of the day, we still were evicted. As a full-time student, I also had to work full-time in order to support my mom because she's not able to pay the rent because she has to pay her debts. Also, my siblings have to work full-time. Like many students in New York City, they're working full-time as well. And then, there's a narrative about people of color and students who have to work. I've heard many, many parents of people who make a lot of money. Look at this guy. He gets food tuition, free ride, and he doesn't do well in school. However, I have to work full-time in order to help my mom pay her rent while they just go to school and just go back home. So it's not fair. I see many tenants struggling to make ends meet. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Pedro Reyes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Pedro Reyes. I live in a 1777 Grand Concourse for almost 21 years. I've been in the community for almost 36 years. My concern is our family. Where we gonna go? What's the next step? It's hard for our family. It's not everybody who have the same lucky life as you guys. Some members of our family can make it. Some of them, at least, still trying. But the efforts that we made is to stay in our community. I grew up in here, and it's hard for me to raise my children without opportunity. A lot of people can make it, but sometimes, people think that we don't have the same look because we don't make the effort. We do make the effort, but unfortunately, sometimes, the system don't make us to get another level. We try hard to stay here and to support our family. It is hard for people that they don't have job or they don't have a good career to get a good support. But it's not that we not try. We tried at all, and we do- and we continue doing the best to stay in this community. I got a lot of friends that have to move forward and move to another state because they don't have the chance to stabilize their family. That doesn't mean that they don't make the effort to succeed. Some have the opportunity to do it, some haven't, I mean, some doesn't, but that doesn't mean that they don't keep trying. So my situation is, I don't know why the panel is helping the landlord increasing the rent when we as a tenant doing the best to stay and to keep the family. In my side, I've been trying the best I can, but the way we're supposed to live in, the landlord don't comply with. The only matter to the landlord is the money. We had difficult situations like myself. I got shot in my job, and the only way to succeed is by my security, my social security. But increasing the rent, my social security is decreasing during the opposite side. So how can be afforded to support my family, to raise my child? It's gonna be impossible. We had no gas, thank you, for more than a year. We didn't have no Halloween, I mean, no Christmas, no New Year. So I mean, family reunion, we don't see it. Tradition like Halloween, I mean, like, sorry, like Thanksgiving, one of those memory days of this country, when the family being reunited, we didn't have it. What about the landlord? He don't care. We support our children with microwave, microwave food. Microwave food make human to get a lot of type of cancer. What about our health? We as poor people, we can't even support our children feeding every day. That was hard for us, and the landlord even show up to see the situation we was living in. So my question to you guys is, do you consider the increase a good choice for the landlords against us? There's no way, and we comply with everything the law said about the appointment, but it's hard for us to comply. So I think nobody could afford it to stay in the building when increasing the rent every month, every year, and the way the landlord raises the rent without control is hard for us. So please, think about the situation we live in right now, and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next speakers are Brigitte Valenzuela, Emmanuel Pardilla, and Edward Sanders.
So my name is Brigitte. I'm just looking at the faces just so I know who I could hold accountable to my dreams being deferred or for somebody who I can make my dreams possible. I've lived here for- I'm born and raised in the Bronx. I'm 30 years old. I live in 2675 Creston Avenue. My building's owned by Bed Park Ash. As we all know, y'all already heard the stories of him. I don't need to go into detail, but he's very notorious for collecting rent. Just three weeks ago... Just three weeks ago, I just lost my abuela to Alzheimer's, and my sister and I had to help my mom cover her portion for the funeral cost. And because of that, we can't even afford to pay our rent for May and for this month. So y'all telling us that we're getting a rent increase? I can't even imagine if I can't even pay my rent now, how- what's gonna happen even after that? I was gonna come with the happy story, born and raised in the Bronx. I graduated here. I dance here. I'm a hip-hop dancer. This is where hip-hop was born. This is where I was born, you know? I'm a proud resident. Everybody that knows me knows that I'm just a regular schmuggler girl from the Bronx, and I always said that, and I'm proud of that. So I'm really pushing for a rent rollback. I'm here with my community, representing them. They representing me, holding my back. I don't even want to tell my brothers. So really, really take our stories into considerations, and I hope y'all remember this story because like they say, you remember the first, the middle, and the end. So have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emmanuel Pardilla.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Emmanuel Pardilla. I'm a tenant organizer for the Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition. I also happen to be a Bronx resident, a NITRA tenant, and I'm very concerned about these increases. I think these increases are ridiculous. I think these increases are devoid from the reality of many tenants living in the Bronx. Realities such as lack of gas, living with mold, living with leaks, ceilings collapsing. These are the realities of tenants who live in these buildings that are cracking apart. Do landlords deserve an increase for not taking care of their buildings? Absolutely not. What you're proposing is a reward for landlords, and landlords do not deserve an increase. We deserve a rent rollback. What do we deserve?
Rent rollback!
What do we deserve?
Rent rollback!
There's tenants who have to tolerate harassment in these buildings. There's landlords who are- There's landlords who are known as predatory equity actors. They're harassing tenants, taking them to court, not fixing their conditions, not doing repairs. This is the reality, that many black, Latino, immigrant, undocumented, monolegal Spanish, French-speaking people have to go through here in the Bronx. And I speak as an organizer. I speak as a tenant, but I speak as a human being. Most importantly, as a human being. I speak as a person who's concerned, a person with a heart, a person who's gonna look at reality in the face and say no. Landlords do not deserve an increase. Tenants deserve a rent rollback!
Thank you. Edward Sanders here.
Good evening. My name is Edward Sanders, and I live in 955 Walton Avenue. I've been a resident at this apartment building for 36 years. I started off as a nine-year-old boy running the streets with no understanding of grown-up problems. And I've grown into a father who has children, who's still in the neighborhood. And there's a lot of people from my neighborhood that's not here right now, but they've seen me grow and become the man that I am. And I really didn't know what to say coming up here. But I have a lot of problems in my apartment, where only time things get fixed is when we're taken to court, where we're facing eviction, and then they come and they do the repairs. Now, we don't owe any rent, and they're still not doing the repairs. I have cracks in my bathroom, I have mold in my bathroom. Took out the old cabinets, put in new ones, but where they put the new ones at don't make any sense because they're over the stove and they're wood with nothing underneath the cover for the grease. I have a three-year-old child that's been diagnosed with slight autism. You know, like, I have ceiling that's falling in the bathroom. I tell the super, you know, I have problems in my apartment. He says, "Oh, you're not on the lease, but you know I live here." And the only time things get done is, "Oh, let me talk to your uncle." But what does my uncle have to do? Because my uncle wants to be friends with you. We're not friends, because you're not being friendly when you come in every month to pick up the rent. Only time you come and do repairs is when you take us to court, or you see that we start organizing. This is where all the repairs in the building have been done. There's apartment, I have a four-and-a-half-bedroom, two-bath apartment. There's apartment in my building on the first floor where a lady lived there just as long as I did. She left the apartment. They did the whole apartment over, and they charging $2,000 in rent. But what about the repairs that need to be done in my apartment? Another tenant just lost their apartment this weekend. They was living there just as long as I was, and it hurt my heart because she had to turn in her keys. And when she turned in her keys, she looked up at her window as she was leaving because she knew this was the last time she was gonna be there. And the pain that I felt from her eyes, this is like, woke me up, like, this can't be life. And then also, my mother, she's suffering from OCPD. My uncle has health problems also. They're not gonna be around much longer, so then these things are gonna fall into my lap. So this is why I'm here to represent my family, because I'm the one that's gonna have to take care of these responsibilities moving forward. And if I'm not involved with them, what will I know? Just, "Oh, your rent is going up, oh, you gotta pay this, you gotta pay that." And not knowing what's going on. And thanks to the help of Jordan, because she's, I'm my house representative, you know? And she helps me along, and she tells me what's going on. Because sometimes, I can't afford to be at these meetings in the building, because I have to go out and try to make a living to help my uncle and my mother help pay for the rent and all the other bills that I have incurred in my house. And when, when does it stop? You know, when will there be some type of change? Y'all wanna collect, they put cameras in my building, they got all types of surveillance in the building, but what about the work that needs to be done inside of the apartments? You open up the compactor, you wanna charge us for the compactor, but you're not cleaning the compactor. You know, you set up the garbage outside of the building, the smell is horrifying, it comes right up into my house. I smell it. The flies come into my house because the garbage is on the side of the building, and then when they take the garbage away, they're not cleaning it adequately. So I don't even understand, like, how can this go on with no changes? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Hanika or Hanika Segura, Arthur Omar Owens, and Yuraldi Perez. Hanika or Hanika, are you here?
Yes, I'm coming.
I think it's 106.
Hola, buena noche. Mi nombre es Hanika Segura. Vivo en el 1777 de Gran Concorde. Llevo más de 16 años, casi 17 viviendo ahí. Y realmente me dirijo a ustedes para que por favor no tomen en consideración. Por favor.
My name's Hanika Segura. I live at 1777 Grand Concorde for almost 17 years, and I'm asking you to take us into
En mi caso tengo tres niños. Vivo con mi madre y también con mi esposo. Llevamos un año, justamente un año y nueve días que no tenemos gas.
So I live there with my three kids, and my mother and my husband, and I have spent one year and nine days without gas.
Tengo que comprar comida. Tengo que pagar alto costo de electricidad. Tengo que cocinar cuando puedo hacerlo. Tengo que hacerlo con cuidado que no me vaya a caer una olla encima, aparte, con el miedo de electrocutarme.
So I have to buy food out, I have to pay high electric bills, and when I do cook, I am scared I get electrocuted, because of the stove that they've given me.
Estoy en una situación de que si prendo la estufa, no puedo prender un microondas. Si prendo el microondas, no puedo poner la estufa. No puedo prender el bombillo de la habitación, no puedo otra cosa porque se me va la luz. Si prendo las dos cosas al mismo tiempo, me quedo sin luz.
So I can't turn on the stove. If I turn on the stove, I have to turn off the microwave. If I turn off the microwave, I have to turn off the stove. And if I turn off, if I turn on both, the lights go out.
En cambio, sí tengo que pagar 100% de mi renta todos los meses. ¿Y yo qué recibo?
For that, I have to pay 100% of my rent every month.
En cambio, yo qué recibo? Elevador en mala condiciones, apartamento que no hacen las reparaciones. Mis hijos no podían o no pueden caminar de carro, ¿por qué? Porque el piso es de madera y está sin pintar, feo.
And so, what do I get for my rent? I get an elevator in bad condition, I have an apartment with conditions, and my kids can't run across the floor because it's in such bad condition.
Lamentablemente, mucha persona me dicen, ¿por qué no te mudas del edificio? Y yo también me pregunto, ¿por qué no me mudo? Claro, por la siguiente razón. No tengo con qué mudarme a otro edificio. ¿Por qué? Porque no gano lo suficiente. En cambio, tengo ahora que trabajar más y estar menos tiempo con mis hijos. ¿Por qué? Porque tengo que... ...doble gasto.
And so, a lot of people, unfortunately, a lot of people, people ask all the time, "Why don't you move?" And I don't have anything, I don't have enough money to move. If I were to make more money, I wouldn't be able to spend time with my children. And then, I would have two costs.
Pregunto para cuándo me van a solucionar el problema del gas. Me dicen, como puede durar un mes, puede durar un año más. Un año más, ¿qué voy a hacer? Yo tengo tres niños, y lamentablemente, los tres me exigen comida.
I ask all the time when the gas is gonna get turned back on, and they say, "In a month, it should be," like, they say it should be another year. And what is she supposed to do in another year? She has to feed three kids.
Vamos a la corte, y la corte qué? Le dan tiempo, 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 tiempo a ellos. ¿Y yo qué? ¿O nosotros los inquilinos que vivimos en el 1777, qué con nosotros?
And so, when we go to court, and they give the landlord time and time and time and time, but they don't give us time.
Mientras ellos placenteramente viven y duermen su noche feliz, yo tengo que vivir con miedo. ¿Por qué con miedo? Porque cuando se fue, o cuando cerraron el gas, los bomberos fueron al edificio y dijeron que encontraron un 12% de gas concentrado. Más sin embargo, ahora yo llamo al landlord y le pregunto a la oficina, ¿qué va a suceder? Y como de burla, porque no puedo decir otra palabra, lo único que me responden es, "No, tiene que esperar un mes, un año, no sabemos. Pero no se preocupen que ya el problema, el peligro ya pasó. Porque ustedes no sabían que ustedes estaban a punto de explotar. Ahora ya por lo menos ya la cosa está mejor."
So when they spend their nights, when they spend their nights sleeping happily, I spend mine in fear because they're putting concentrated gas, gas concentrado? They're putting concentrated gas, and they're saying that, like, you know, you can spend, you can spend months doing this, you can spend another year doing this, it's fine.
Yeah. We were looking for the regular interpreter. All right.
Doing great!
Ha ha, thank you guys. And for that, they say that they don't, it's fine because they don't even know that they're in danger.
No tienen, prácticamente, no tienen con qué solucionarnos el problema del gas. Pero sí tienen con qué comprar edificio más edificio más edificio, porque ahora...
So they don't know how to fix our apartments, but they do know how to keep buying buildings and buildings.
Porque ahora en marzo supe que ellos compraron un edificio por una suma... Una suma, no. Asden compró un edificio en marzo por una suma millonaria, más sin embargo, nosotros abajo. Pero tenemos que pagarle su renta, y nosotros, a cambio, nos aplastan, por decir así la palabra, como si fuéramos cucaracha. En cambio, nosotros necesitamos que ellos sí acaben con la cucaracha que tenemos en el edificio, con los ratones que tenemos, pero eso no lo terminan ellos.
So they buy, so we pay their rent every month so that they can buy a new building. They bought a building in March for millions of dollars, and meanwhile, we're... $38 million. And meanwhile, we are at the bottom, living like cockroaches. I wish they could come and see the cockroaches in our apartments.
Por favor, como madre y como residente del Bronx, le pido que por favor tomen en cuenta, o no tomen en cuenta, no tomen en consideración. Tal vez no tenemos, o no tengo la fortuna de decir, "Me voy a ir a otro sitio, o voy a hacer otra cosa." Aparte, mis hijos nacieron en el Bronx, mis hijos nacieron en ese edificio, mis hijos van a la escuela en ese edificio. Como madre, me preocupo por ellos. ¿Qué tal? Tal vez yo consiga y diga, "Oh, me voy a mudar." Pero qué tal que me mude a otro vecindario creyendo que es bien y para mis hijos sería algo terrible. Tal vez lo lleve a otra escuela, que no sé qué sucedería. En cambio, donde ellos van, yo trato de que estén seguro. El escuela que donde van cada uno de ellos, o donde han ido desde que empezaron la escuela.
So, as a mother, as a resident of the Bronx, I ask you to take us into consideration because I had three kids born in this building that grew up in this building, and I don't know what would happen if I were to move them to another neighborhood, to another school. This is what, like, this is it, this is where they are.
Thank you. We need to move on, we still have several more speakers. Thank you.
Bueno, de todo corazón les agradezco el que estén ahí sentados escuchando los problemas de cada uno de nosotros, especialmente el mío, porque le digo que como madre me preocupa bastante, y como persona. Ahora mismo, tal vez diría que estoy un poquito más tranquila porque ya empezó el caliente, y digo, "Algo que sucede, bueno, pues agarro mis niños, puedo salir corriendo, y estamos en calor." Pero en el invierno, vivía orando y pidiéndole, "Dios mío, que no suceda nada, que no suceda nada." Porque cómo voy a tener tiempo de agarrar mis hijos, agarrar un coo, agarrar un tenio, agarrar una bota para sacarlo para la calle, que no se me mueran entonces del frío. Me salvo de una explosión aquí en el edificio, pero afuera no vamos a morir del frío. No tenemos para dónde ir. No tenemos. Gracias.
So, I just want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to her, and I would like to know that she worries a lot about what is to happen in her building. It's a little bit easier because it's summer, because in winter, if there's an explosion in her building, she's gonna relieve the explosion, but then be able to grab some things along the way, but instead of dying of the explosion, she'll die of cold. So it's a little bit easier for her now, but these are things that worry her, and these are the things that preoccupy her. Thank you.
The next speaker is Arthur Omar Owens. Is Arthur Omar Owens here? He left? Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Yuraldi Perez, and I am an organizer of CASA. I'm here today because we know tenants need and deserve a rent rollback. We've heard testimonies from dozens of tenants about having MCI's. In the last six years alone, landlords have made over a billion dollars in MCI's, in permanent increases. That is not counting IAIs, legal fees, AC fees, stove fees, late fees. Landlords have benefited for over 40 years from increases. And now that tenants have organized just to get two freezes in the last two years, landlords, and you, think it's too much. 50% of the Bronx tenants are paying 50% or more of their income in rent. You guys have heard testimony about tenants barely being able to pay their current rent, about the conditions that they face when they go home, about the harassment that they face because they organize, about becoming homeless because they couldn't afford to stay in their homes. Housing is a human right, but in this country, it's treated like a commodity, as if poor and working-class people don't deserve a roof over their head. In 2016, homelessness increased for the eighth consecutive year, and that ain't right. Tenants who have endured and rebuilt the city deserve to stay here. Today, you're hearing from the experts about what they need. So while you go home to your comfy homes, there'll be some folks that'll be thinking about where they will sleep tonight, if they have, if they will have a roof over their heads tomorrow, what they will decide to pay at the end of the month, the rent, food, medicine. And I know you guys want to do the right thing, so do it. If on June 27, you decide to increase rents for over 2.5 million tenants in New York City, you're no better than, you are no better than the landlords you've heard of today.
Thank you. I have to make an announcement. I have to make an announcement, please. Excuse me. We have three more speakers, but we've been told we have to be out of the building by 10:30. So I'm gonna read the names of the speakers and please try to be brief. Roberto Reyes, Enrique Colon, and Israel Tejada.
Oh, they said George?
Yeah.
Then you signed up early.
Are you Roberto Reyes?
Oh, so we have one of our CASA members here, George Sotirov. He signed up really early and he wasn't called, so I wanna bring up George.
When did he sign up?
Good evening. My name is George Sotirov. I've been living at 901 Walton Avenue since 1981. I am an active member of both CASA and the No More MCI Tenant Coalition. Most of what I am going to say you've already heard, and I'll be quick about it. Over the past six years landlords have been granted over a billion dollars in MCI-related increases, although much of the work done was unnecessary. As Casey Stengel used to say, "You can look it up." My building has been flipped three times in the past ten years and is currently owned by Finkelstein Timberger LLC. Finkelstein Timberger is affectionately known as the king of the MCI. We know that Finkelstein Timberger is turning a handsome profit. Why? Because he owns eighteen residential buildings in my zip code alone and he owns seventy-two residential buildings altogether in the Bronx. Undoubtedly, he will continue to add to his portfolio. Now, Mr. Walsh, you wanna know that we are not against profits. We're not. No. What we are against is double dipping. Okay, Finkelstein Timberger has received permission from the state to raise my rent more than 25%. Thirty point six percent, to be precise, by the time this current MCI will be fully implemented. Think about it. Thirty point six percent. That's an increase. So, ladies and gentlemen of the Rent Guidelines Board, the impartial observer will view any rent increase as double dipping. Tenants will view any additional rent imposed by the Rent Guidelines Board as gouging. What we need is a rent rollback.
Roberto Reyes. Mr. Reyes, please observe the two minutes.
My name is Enrique Colon and I'm an employee at CASA New Settlement Apartments. And I also live in the southwest Bronx. I was born and raised here. I've been living in this community over forty years. I live at 80 Featherby Lane. It's a project-based Section A building. And I also am here in support of what everyone said here tonight. And I wanna say that the Rent Alliance Board should vote for a rent rollback because of the following reasons. One, because thousands of tenants throughout the city are paying for MCI's, which increases their rents hundreds and thousands of dollars each year, which is a permanent increase on their rent. Two, tenants throughout the city are paying preferential rents. And we at CASA are seeing increasing amounts of tenants coming to our office saying that the landlord now wants to raise their rent to a legal amount of rent, that at times is a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, or even more. Another reason why you should vote for a rent rollback is because many tenants are being taken to court for frivolous reasons. Many tenants get rent receipts that are incorrect, saying that they owe money. And many times those increases go up to the thousands of dollars. Many senior, not even just seniors, but also women and men, are many times afraid and they pay sometimes money that they don't owe. So they're paying double their rent or even more because they're afraid that the landlord's gonna kick them out, not knowing that they shouldn't pay those increases on their rent receipt when they're incorrect.
Thank you. Could you wind up your presentation? We have one more speaker and we have to be out of it by 10:30.
Yes, and you will have to wait until I finish. The other reason why you should vote for a rent rollback is because, as you heard tonight, many tenants are not getting repairs from their landlords. They don't get no heat and hot water during the winter. They are facing huge leaks. They have mold. Their kids are coming up with lead. Many buildings have vermin. There's mice. There's rats. There's bedbugs. And for that reason and all the other reasons, and also on behalf of all the tenants that are not here, that didn't know about this hearing because it wasn't widely publicized or because they are afraid, many that are immigrants, many that are undocumented. And because of that, some tenants tell me, "If I come to this hearing, well, I'll be deported." So on behalf of all those tenants, hundreds and thousands of tenants that are not here, we demand a rent rollback this year in 2017.
Israel Tejada.
I just wanna say, this is a tenant, José Ramírez, and he's gonna be testifying. He got a bit here late, but you are here to hear public testimony.
Tengo cinco años viviendo en la 135 Elliot Place, apartamento cinco D, en el Bronx. Mi casero es David Graham Webb. La junta reguladora...
My name is José Ramírez. I've been, I live at 135 Elliot Place. I've been...
¿Veinticinco?
Cinco años. I've been living five years there in this apartment.
La junta reguladora, en vez de aumentar la renta, deberías reducirla. ¿Por qué? Porque aparte de la renta...
The RGB, instead of raising the rent, should roll it back. Why? Because aside from rent...
Uno tiene otros gastos, tales como... Los alimentos, la medicina, transporte, vestimenta, envío familiares, etc.
Because aside from rent, one has other expenses such as food, clothing, transportation, family obligations, etc.
Y los ingresos son bajos.
And income is low.
En mi caso, yo pago el 50% de mi sueldo en renta.
In my case, I'm paying fifty percent of my income on rent.
Mi casero me cobra veintiún pesos por usar yo mi lavadora que compré.
My landlord charges me twenty-one dollars for using my washing machine that I bought.
Para el mes de agosto, me aumentó dramáticamente la renta a cuatrocientos veintinueve dólares al mes.
In the month of August, my rent was increased four hundred and twenty-nine dollars dramatically.
Eso equivale al 43, el 44% de lo que estoy pagando actualmente.
That is the equivalent of forty-four percent of what my current rent was.
Es decir, en el año yo estoy pagando doce mil ciento ochenta, noventa pesos. Y voy a pagar, si acepto eso, diecisiete mil trescientos treinta y un dólares.
Which is to say, my rent expense would be twelve thousand one hundred and ninety a year. And if I accept this increase, it would be seventeen thousand three hundred and thirty.
O sea, o sea, tengo que apagar adicional lo que estoy pagando ahora, cinco mil ciento cuarenta y dos pesos en el año.
So I have to pay an additional five thousand... Cinco mil ciento cuarenta y nueve, ¿no?
Ciento cuarenta y dos.
So five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars on top of my regular rent.
Esto es sencillamente inaceptable.
This is simply unacceptable.
Además, debo informarles que hay deterioro en el apartamento, en el edificio, dañado, o sea, y no reparan.
Aside from the fact that there's damage in the apartment and in the building and there's faults that aren't being repaired.
Si nosotros los inquilinos, los inquilinos, con el actual precio que pagamos de renta, se nos hace difícil. En mi caso particular, yo trabajo doce horas, seis días a semana. Y aún así tengo problema para pagar actualmente. Imagínense si acepto cinco mil y pico más adicional al año. Y si me mudo o trato de mudarme buscando lugar más aceptable económicamente.
We need to get the interpretation and then we have to wind this up.
¿Dónde voy? Porque las viviendas asequibles, yo no sé dónde están.
So as it is, I have to work twelve hours a day, six days a week. And I struggle to pay rent as this. How am I to pay an additional five thousand dollars plus a year? And if I move, where can I move to? I don't know where the affordable housing is. I haven't seen it.
Y no vivo solo. Tengo mi esposa, mi hijo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
And I don't live alone. I have my wife and my son. Thank you very much.
Go ahead a second. We are in adjournment. Thank you all for your testimony.